I'd like to bring this meeting of the school committee to order and welcome all of you here and welcome everybody who's following us on their computers. Let us start with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to
To the republic
To stand one nation under God.
Thank you very much. The first item really discussed here this evening is a little housekeeping item about these remote meetings. As you can see, committee members, as you look at the agenda, we moved unity input to the end of the meeting. Because there is a link that the public can access Peggy Grimes during the meeting. So if she gets any emails about any of the topics we've covered or some other topic at the end of the meeting, when we get to that agenda item, she will tell us what they are and perhaps we can address them or get them on a future agenda. What else about this? We are live, being broadcast live in real time. So keep smiling, okay? I put on a shirt for tonight's meeting. Okay. What else?
Do you have pants on?
What else, Gary, in terms of where we are?
I think Dr. Sorensen, I think the, just a note for school committee members, we are using Zoom. As you, as you realize, there was a pause before you were able to log in.
Yeah.
And I had you in a waiting room until you were verified as to who you were. So everyone on the call is verified and officially on the agenda for tonight.
Okay. Anybody have any questions about this, this type of meeting? I should say one more thing that I read, and I don't know who sent this to me, Peggy, you may have sent it to me last week, that we're getting some recommendation as to not have critical items on our agenda during remote meetings. Is that correct?
Yes, Dr. Sorensen, that is correct.
Where did that come from?
The recommendation came from MASC through the governor's order in that business should be kept to items that are important to keeping the district running smoothly and items that need to be voted upon by the full committee. Items such as informational items and regular updates can be avoided or delayed for a future meeting.
Okay. So you know we're behind schedule on our school improvement plans and reports from directors. So when we get running full time, we're going to have some pretty long agenda. So just be ready. Any questions on that, on that agenda item from anybody?
No.
Okay, moving on then. The next two items, update on our current COVID-19 plans and the rollout of remote learning, I think kind of roll them together and turn it over to Dr. Maestas.
Yes, we, as you know, have been working behind the scenes. You know, this is our second phase of our online learning component. Our first phase, we were actually in session when we rolled that out and we discussed that. We had the opportunity to share with, with you, the school committee, as well as other members that we would, other community members that we would be compiling resources and making them available for our general public, our student population. And that guidance was brought to us by the commissioner of education here in Massachusetts. And we rolled that out thinking that we were going to be out for, for three weeks, coming back today, which I think a lot of us realized that that was just an intermediate measure. And we, we, we did do that. And what's, what's nice about the model that we have today is we've actually incorporated a lot more online interactivity with teachers. And this is our second phase. We have been planning this for quite some time. It takes a lot to get up and running. I'd like to give a great deal of credit and acknowledgement to Dr. Campbell and the coordinators, directors, principals for their diligent work behind the scenes. Also, the teachers, starting Thursday and into today, have been uploading content available for our students that, you know, helps out with the courses that they're responsible for. And I'll also like to mention Ms. Frye for her work with the EAPC and just, you know, working diligently behind the scenes to, to get us rolling. And I call it seamless, some people may not. But from our operation to make all this work and to have it ready to roll out for tomorrow is a huge undertaking. There are a lot of people that have, that were asking, well, why don't we just roll out digital learning this, the second day we were out? And, you know, those of us that work in this field know that that is near impossible. It's been near impossible for colleges and universities to do it. So here we are at a K through 12 environment, a pre-K through 12 environment, trying to getting this, this off the ground. I think we've done a good job of that. And at this point, Dr. Sorensen, I'd like to turn the, this portion of the meeting over to, to, through you, Dr. Sorensen, to Dr. Campbell, so he can kind of just walk through exactly what the general public will see and, and what to expect. So, Dr. Campbell, take it away.
Thank you, Dr. Maestas. So I'm going to share my screen with you and the public will be able to see this on their televisions as well. So what I would like to do first, before we get into the specific breakdown of the website, I think it's important that I share with you and highlight some, some of the things that have taken place in our district behind the scenes for a week or so at this time. We've had a lot of various responses depending on the COVID-19 situation within our community. So I think it's important that we highlight the work that's been done in the timeline that we've been followed, which has led us here to this particular time where we're going to be moving to remote learning, as Dr. Maestas said. So with that, I have a short presentation before I walk you and the public through this website. I just want to say one thing. Our teachers have been doing, as Dr. Maestas, Maestas said, an amazing job connecting with their students during this closure, providing them additional opportunities to learn and connect as well as just check in. While our remote learning hasn't really started yet and we've had learning opportunities, as we've mentioned before, they've really done a fantastic job with really connecting with our students, which is paramount. It's also important to note that our guidance from the Department of Education prior to March 27th, which was just last week, was that districts were not approved for remote learning. So at that time, the department said that they would work in partnership with schools in districts to develop strategies and resources to sustain learning and vital services. So they were not approving districts to move forward with remote learning at that time because we're not online institutions or innovation schools. We've been involved weekly, if not daily, in some cases with conversations, conference calls with Department of Public Health, Department of Education and other state officials and use that information to guide us and shape the decisions that we've been making thus far. So sort of, it's important, I think, to highlight the timeline of events that have taken place. So we really first started having conversations, I want to say it was about February 20th, right at the end of our winter recess, when things were really starting to come to the forefront in this country. A central office team began to discuss how we should handle certain situations with school in session and what we may need to do if school required a short term and long term closure. So we started thinking about that and planning internally about that, waiting for guidance from the Department of Education and DPH, of course. Shortly thereafter, a couple of weeks, few weeks actually, on March 11th, we received specific guidance from Department of Public Health and Department of Education. Department of Education at that time did not recommend school closures unless local health departments felt it was warranted. That being said, there were many districts in the metro Boston area, you may recall, were closing at that time for two or more weeks. I believe Everett was one that closed for 30 days at that point. The commissioner of education, Commissioner Riley, set, stated on a conference call then that online learning would not be considered by the Department of Education as districts were not approved by DESI for remote learning at that time. And his suggestion to us as districts was to plan for remote learning opportunities, and that's exactly what we did. And we went through that presentation at a school committee meeting not too long ago. So on March 13th, you know, just a couple of days later, as you all know, things really were developing and progressing at an exponential rate every day, every half day, really. And Plymouth, along with most of the districts in the greater South Shore area at that time, decided to close our schools for two weeks. And that message went out shortly after that decision was made. Two days later, coincidentally, Governor Baker called for the closing of all public schools in Massachusetts effective March 17th. We gave districts until that following Tuesday through April 6th, and that was a directive on March 15th. As we know, 10 days later, Governor Baker extended that closure to all public schools in Massachusetts until at least May 4th. And that's the situation that we find ourselves in now. With that information from the governor's office, Commissioner Riley then had a conference call with, with us as district leaders on the 27th and encouraged districts at that time to prepare for remote learning with students. And one thing that was important to note in this call and the guidance that we've received thus far since then, the commissioner stressed that these opportunities that we're now providing should not exceed more than three hours a day per student. And the reason being is that situations at home vary, technology availability varies. And we have to plan for a reasonable amount of remote learning time for every student in the Commonwealth. So at this point, so it was March 27th, when we really started getting a clearer direction and guidance in terms of moving forward with remote learning. So that didn't give us much time. So what have, what have we done since then? So March 27th to present day? Well, what we've done is we've designed a completely new framework website, constructed common templates for each school and department to use. And I'm going to highlight some of these in a moment, whether it's office hour templates, lesson plan templates, academic resources. We've developed brand new webpages for academic resources with specific enrichment opportunities and supports. We have curated support resources and videos to assist our teachers with remote learning, remote lesson planning, excuse me. We've also, through our tech staff and tech department, provided ongoing professional development to over 500 participants in one week in a variety of technology resources. And I've mentioned some of them here down below, Flipgrid, Screencast, Google Meet, Google Classroom. These are all tools that will enhance the learning opportunities for our students during remote instruction. So we thought it was really critical to provide professional development in a rapid and immediate and ongoing time this last week. We've since populated all documents with the essential school department teacher information. Dr. Maestas mentioned a lot of that started on Thursday. We've linked these documents to our website, provided over 800 unique folders for teachers to connect their lesson plans. Part of this requires technology, which, and devices in the hands of students. So since last week, we've deployed over 700 Chromebooks across the district. And our principals continue to reach out to families and connect with them, make arrangements for pickup and delivery of machines to this very day. So last week, you will recall, I sent out a communication to our families at the end of the week stating that we would be moving forward with this remote learning on Tuesday. And since then, we have received over 20,000, 24,000 views of that communication. So we know that the word's getting out there. So what I would like to highlight before walking you through the website is what's the difference between learning opportunities, the website that we currently have and the remote learning website, which we're going to be highlighting starting tomorrow? Well, first and foremost, the learning opportunities website that we've created provides very global, while very instructive suggestions organized by grade level and discipline. And we walked through that last time and I showed you all the resources and the tools that our academic coordinators put together for our families to take advantage of when school was not in session. It did not reinforce any new content, meaning that it was all resources and websites that would reinforce things that students have experienced in school already. There is no student teacher engagement that is necessary with that learning opportunities website. And one thing that we went forward with right away immediately though, however, which is really was critical to us was the student support, mental health and EL support. So we wanted to make sure with the existing website that we currently have, that all those things were in place from the very beginning. So that was really critical for us. So, so we did that right away. Now with this new remote learning website, it's much more classroom centered. You're going to see specific lessons and from teachers reinforcing not only the content that students were engaged in the week prior to closing school, but also introducing new content, new concepts and skills moving forward. So that's a critical piece. It's now classroom centered. It's, it's, it's very specifically teacher centered to their students. This teachers and students will engage in common lessons and activities through a variety of platforms, which I've mentioned before, Google Classroom and as well as other platforms. And those will be a part of those lesson plan templates that you'll see. The student support, mental health, English learner support, special education resources, all that is critical and is continuing with this website and it's only enhanced from before. And another piece that is critical to this new remote learning is direct immediate access to teachers, specialists, guidance and other staff. And that's what we're doing through our office hours. And I'll talk about that momentarily. And what else is critical to this part of our process or phase two is carefully monitoring student family engagement with specific school protocols in place to outreach when families and students aren't engaged for whatever reason. So I'm about to get through the website, but important things to note, we are deliberately moving slowly during this new phase. We need to move slow in order to do it right and do it well. We've designed this website with flexibility in mind. We need to consider the unique circumstances our families and teachers are experiencing to continue to teach from home, while many of them have young children also learning from home at the same time. We're providing both synchronous, which means real time and asynchronous opportunities to engage with teachers. But what's important to say there is while we may be providing these synchronous opportunities, we will not be mandating students to log on at a specific time with a specific teacher. We may be encouraging that and providing those opportunities, but we are not going to mandate that everyone's logging in at a specific time. The reason being is this, the unique circumstances that I mentioned before, we need to address this with flexibility in mind because I know that Dr. Maestas has had many conversations with parents. I've had many conversations with parents as well. And all of their circumstances are different. So we have to make this as meaningful while also being as flexible and understanding to what families are facing while they're essentially locked in their homes and trying to work themselves. So we'll be providing these opportunities, but realize that everyone's situation is different at home, as I just said. So the new website, there are key components to this website and I'm going to be highlighting all of these, the office hours, the weekly templates and all these tools that you see on the screen right now in front of you. If any of our families are having a challenge, oppose a challenge, receiving any of these resources for any reason, we encourage our families to reach out to the joint principal as soon as possible. They can also reach out to their, their teachers, of course. We will be monitoring the activity of our students and our outreach, outreach efforts will be extraordinary, I can guarantee you during this closure. Connectedness with our kids is critical during this time. And like, like I said in a previous slide, we will be, we have protocols in place at each school and we'll be monitoring the student activity ongoingly and consistently. And we'll be doing wellness checks if we have to in order to make sure that our families and our teachers, in fact, are okay through this process. So right now, this is just a screenshot of what, yeah.
Before we go into this part of it, I want to see if committee members have any questions or comments or concerns about sort of the overarching presentation we just, we just so heard. Committee members, comments, questions at this point before we get into the real nitty gritty. I have, I have two. One is, I think I read this, that whole presentation, we had that set up in a multilingual presentation somewhere. So for our people who are, are parents who are parents who don't speak English?
Yes, thank you very much, Dr. Sorensen. So the website, everything that's embedded in this website is in HTML and we can translate it automatically into other languages. And I can point that out as a feature as well. And all of our, all of our communications have been translated into Portuguese as well.
Okay. And my second question was, so there are many families that have four kids and one computer.
Yeah.
So I'm guessing when you said we're not, we don't have mandated times to be online, that's one of the reasons, I would assume.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. All right. Any other questions?
Sorry, I'm here. Is there any, any other questions?
No, sounds like I can go ahead.
Okay, very good. Thank you. So at this time, I'm going to walk through the website so that everyone can see it. Okay. And we're going to open that up. So this is a sneak peek. I want to point out that a message will be going out to all families and staff early tomorrow morning with a link to the new website as well as navigation instructions. And the school community will also be receiving a copy of this message as well. So you'll be receiving that very early in the morning with all the directions, features and everything that I'm presenting this evening. We're also doing a recording of this present, presentation and our EdTV staff will be editing a video of the presentation, which will be later published to our website. So we're trying to get the information out in as many ways as we possibly can. So at this point, I'm going to walk through the components of the website. Okay. So the four secondary schools are set up very consistently. And I'm going to walk through Plymouth North High School as an example. I just want to point out on the top of the screen here, you can see, I don't know if you see my, I'm hovering over translate. This will allow us to translate our website and all the features on there in a variety of languages, actually. But I'm going to walk through Plymouth North High School as an example of what the secondary pages will look like. Okay? So you can see here, we've set them up very consistently. The remote learning content is right on the page. So you don't have to go anywhere else. It's all right here. We start off with office hours. These are times, I'm going to open this up so you can actually see what this looks like. But when you open this tab up, and I need to move things on my screen, excuse me. Everything is consistent on every, on every page. I want to point that out. These are times where more immediate correspondence will take place. So administrators are going to be available all day, but our staff have identified key hours twice a week where they'll be available and will check back the students and families in a more immediate manner. So everyone is always available via email and will get to individuals in timely manner if email is outside of the office hours. But these office hours are for more immediate feedback to families when needed. And that is something that is on every single page for, excuse me, I have to move these tabs on my screen. Every one of our pages will have the office hours highlighted. We also have a weekly lesson plan template directory here on all secondary schools. You can see this next tab as I open this up. And this is the links that are organized by department. So if I open this up for you, what you're going to see here is by department for this school and for every school, we've, we've done this. The email address for the teacher, if you have any questions, and these names are hyperlinks. These hyperlinks essentially, if I hover over CCTE, our vocational programs, Miss Drew's, the department head, this is going to take you to Miss Drew's folder and all of her lesson plans will be in there to access. So we've done everything in one quick directory rather than having people navigate all over the place. So we thought that that was critical that we set it up in one consistent manner, particularly for the secondary levels where you have over 100 teachers in one particular school. So that's what we've done there. In terms of academic resources for students and families, you can see this here. This is revised and enhanced resources from what we did before. So you recall the academic coordinators presenting the resources from before. These are enhanced resources. There's at least 15 new resources on each of these links by all departments. And you'll see those there. These are opportunities for students to engage in, in enrichment beyond what they may be experiencing. If three hours a day isn't enough, there's a lot, there's a lot here that students can do to enhance their learning even more. So we provided that for all academic areas as well. Our English learners tab right here, this is going to be on every single school page also. Dedicated resources and contacted information for those students, which, so when you click on this, it's going to, again, bring you to a specific document that's going to give you more specific information for your English language learners. It's in English and it's in Portuguese and the EL teachers' information's in there as well as resources provided by our EL staff. The clever and login information right down here, this is information for accessing technology within our district. Clever login information for students as well as other login information that they may need. And then our COVID-19 tab right here, resources, this goes back to our health office and provides all the health related information that we've provided and other suggestions and help, help tips related to COVID-19. So these are on all of the pages, but this is specifically for the secondary, how it's broken down. You'll also reference on the bottom, you'll see that it says Plymouth Public Schools disclaimer. We've added this disclaimer page to every page, which stresses appropriate behavior, terms and conditions when working in a remote environment. So when you actually click on this disclaimer, it's going to bring you to a detailed one-page disclaimer about acceptable use for online remote learning and what kind of behaviors for that kind of experience. So we've, we've made sure that that's on every page as well. So at this time, I'll take, are there any questions regarding the high school page or I can just move on to the, the rest of it?
I have a question.
Yep.
Um, I know we talked a little bit about this, I don't know, in our last meeting, but I think it might be helpful to kind of explain how you were telling us that the principals had coordinated. So hopefully the teachers don't have too many overlapping times that will work, especially on the high school level when they have multiple teachers.
Sure. Yeah, there's, there's definitely, there was a lot of communication, all of our principals, coordinators and directors, particularly our principals in this case, went through and they had conference calls with all of their departments and, and, and went through and tried to plan as, as, as best they could to provide as many opportunities as they can in terms of their office hours. Yeah, with that in mind, you're welcome. Okay. So I'm going to move on to the middle school. Again, the middle school is set up very similar to the high school. The only difference here is that the lesson plan directories are set up differently. So these page, you see these tabs, I'm not going to go through these again for you. You've seen these, these are specific obviously to middle school curriculum, middle school content, middle school resources. But in terms of the weekly lesson plan template, when you click on this, you're going to see a lesson plan, excuse me, not the lesson plan template, my apologies, that's set up the same way. No, that, no, I'm, I'm right. I'm sorry. I'm confusing myself. The weekly lesson plan templates are broken up by department. But they're also broken up by team. Okay? So in this case, the South Middle School, grade seven teachers, floor two, it all depends on how the school has, you know, how they're familiar with that. At PNAS, they work in houses and at South Middle School, they go by floors. So this is very personalized to the way that they communicate with their families and students so that they can find their information in an easy, an easy way. Okay? Essentially, everything else is similar to have a high school set up. So I want to walk you through the elementary, which is set up a little bit differently. And I'm going to purposely click on federal furnace because they have, they have a specific program at their school too. So for the elementary schools, again, we've personalized them to, you know, with their icons and their own information. But you'll see their office hour template is here, just like at the other schools. But our lesson plan templates, we've created icons for the grade levels and programs in the form of these, these icons here. And these are lesson plan templates that are embedded in here. It's important to note that if your child takes part in a specialized program such as STRIVE, our autistic spectrum program down here, you see this icon down there. You'll find a separate icon on your child's page or you, excuse me, on your school page where the teachers and specialists develop lesson plans for those students. Okay? So we have our grade level lesson plan folders. And then we have our specific program folders for our students that are receiving specialized support. So these, these lesson plans, I'm going to click on one to show you, click on grade three. Okay. These are, this is an example. You'll see a lesson plan template that includes all content areas including literacy, math, including literacy, math, science, social studies, physical education, health, art, music, as well as instrumental, uh, when it's applicable to the grade level. Our ra- related service providers, such as OTs, PTs, um, our speech and language have also incorporated activities on the grade level templates for any student that may receive related services in support of that classroom. So we put it all on the grade level lesson plan template. You can see the contact information again on the top of each lesson plan. So if you don't want to go back to the office hour sheet, you can see their availability there, their email there. So we're trying to make it as seamless as possible and put everything in a location where parents aren't going to have to navigate and students aren't going to have to navigate all over creation to find it. And we've also done the same thing, as I mentioned, for our autistic spectrum programs and our other programs within the district. So they have a personalized template here that has their specific lessons, again, following the content area, um, but they also have included things. There's Mia Johnson photos, which are incorporated into most of these programs. Um, they've incorporated a number of social skills activities, their specials, and everything that's unique to their specific program. So we're trying to make it as personalized as we possibly can in this remote environment. Again, the academic resources, this again is similar to the secondary, but we put it right on the page like this. By grade level, you go to kindergarten, you're going to see all the content areas, including health and wellness. There's a lot of health and wellness opportunities there for students, uh, but we've done that for all grade levels as well. Again, the English learners tabs, clever login information, COVID nineteen, and the disclaimer, these are all the same, um, or consistent, I should say, not the same, but consistent with the secondary schools, but just unique for that particular grade span for the elementary in this case. Any questions about the elementary pages?
I have a question.
Yep.
Jim, um, so with the, I just want to make sure that I, so in order for a student or a parent to get into their particular school, they can't go into any schools and see what that same grade level teacher's doing, they can only get into their own school, is that correct?
It's, it's open.
Okay, so how close are they across the board with this?
Very, very, I'm sorry to cut you off, very close. We have encouraged, I should have pointed, this is a good question, Kim, and I should have, uh, prefaced this.
It was actually raised to me by a parent, was asked me to ask that question.
So we have, you know, as I said in, in that, the slideshow that I put together, we've been working really hard, uh, this past week to provide a lot of academic resources, uh, through our coordinators and principals, um, and have created and curated, websites and folders with content that's very, um, grade level specific. And we're encouraging our grade level teams to work collectively and collaboratively on these lesson plan templates. Not only for consistency's sake across schools and across grade levels at schools, but also, you know, we're also trying to prepare for, you know, God forbid, something happens and someone's sick, and, and learning has to continue. So if I'm a third grade teacher and I get sick, you know, my third grade classroom needs to continue to be educated in this remote learning environment. So we've created a system and processes in places, particularly at the elementary level, where this is going to happen. So when you, when you log in there, um, you can get, um, you can, you can do it on every school, but we're going to provide that consistency across, um, grade levels and across the schools.
Yeah, because you don't want somebody from like South Elementary to log onto Cold Spring and say, well, look what they're doing, how come we're not doing something like that?
Yep, so we're really, we're encouraging that collaboration and consistency, and our principals have been outstanding to support that as well. So it's really been principal coordinator, director, a great, great collaboration in that process.
Awesome, thank you.
So Chris, let me ask you, so, uh, maybe everybody else understands this, but I don't, but I'm a third grade student, and on Thursday morning, my, I have the computer in my house because my brothers, my brothers are sleeping, and I want to do some math work, and I'm going to find out what my math teacher wants me to do. Could you show me how that third grader will find out what he's supposed to do?
So where they're going to go is they can go on, and, and so while we've used a, a template that is date-specific, we want to encourage people or stress to people that this is like a, consider it like a calendar of activities. So much like, you know, there are many elementary, uh, for those of you who have had elementary or have elementary, uh, students, um, yourselves, some of your teachers may provide homework in a calendar format or have in the past. Uh, we're, we're approaching it very similarly. So if it says Tuesday here, and you can see, we're also recommending, I'll highlight this here, we're recommending how much time it should take a, a given student to complete the activities that are in this, this lesson plan template. So if it's taking you more than thirty or forty-five minutes for this particular piece, probably time to, to move on or connect with your teacher for, um, additional guidance, okay? So we've tried to break it down by recommended time, considering that we don't want students to be spending more than three hours a day, given the guidance that we received from the commissioner. So you can literally log in, you can see the research club, go to the Google Drive, there'll be more lessons there from the teacher, the activities, a lot of them have set up the Google classrooms, the links will be in there. Um, so the information's here, and you, you, you literally will go day by day, understanding that, um, not everything is going to be sequential and not everything's going to happen in the day that it necessarily is written there. So if, if, say, for example, that you want to do Tuesday and Wednesday on Tuesday, because, you know, the Chromebook's available for you and you need to, to do more on those days, then you have, you know, six hours worth of, of work that you potentially could do. So we've really broken it down in a calendar view, but understanding that, uh, students and families may need to approach it piece by piece or, or pick and choose when they want to, um, engage in some of these activities.
Okay, so I go on and I, and I go and I click, click, click on one of these, one of these things here, and then I do some work. Uh, I do a worksheet, or I read a paper, or I do some work.
Yep.
How, where does that work go?
The work, so the teachers have set up their own conditions, and through their emails and their Google classrooms, they'll be communicating with students and families on where this information should go and providing feedback on that. So it's really, it's, that's the, um, the synchronous piece. So as things are done, we're going to be providing feedback to students and to families, in this case, at the elementary level. So, um, it's a, it's a very fluid, it's a very, very fluid process, Jim.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome. So another piece that I want to point out is the preschool, because that is a little bit different than the elementary. So we've done a great job with our preschool, and I'm going to click on that. Um, the preschool has three main sections. They have office hours, just like everyone else, and that will take you to the same, uh, directory for their school. They have a lesson plan, uh, template. This folder's going to bring you to all the teachers, so all the teachers' folders are there, and everyone can view them. It's all broken down there. Uh, we've also added a tips for learning at home resource, so the document in there that families can access, excuse me. And then our Plymouth Family Network has also developed stories of the day, which are deposited into this folder. And, um, these are specific sects, this specific section includes recorded videos of read-alouds, story extensions and ideas of the day. So there are, those will be posted in there on a daily basis for our, our preschool families to engage in as well. So in addition to the school tabs, we have some other side tabs you'll see here, our student support and special education. This tab includes enhanced resources for students and families, as well as specific contact information for our local staff, specialists, and agency supports in special education and the student supports department, and a number of resources, contact information, specific mental health and COVID nineteen resources, uh, supports are here as well. We've, we've added a section, resources for families. This is brand new as well. Um, this section, we provide information on food distribution, internet access support, tips for navigating Chromebooks, um, in their Chromebook distribution. So there's a number of things in here to support our families, either for food, crisis issues, internet, or any kind of tech issues they may have with the Chromebooks that have been deployed across this district. We have a resource section for students, and in this, you'll see there are side tabs here. Uh, one thing that we have, this is a term called symboloo. For those who aren't familiar with symboloo, this is a symboloo on your screen. This is one spot where all the school-specific educational sites can be found in the form of icons. So anything the student needs is here, in the form of an icon. We have that at the elementary, middle, and high school level, and those tabs, um, are available, the symboloo links are available for our students and our families to help navigate, um, all the resources that we have available to students when they're in school. Uh, we also have assistive technology as a part of our resources for, uh, students and assistive technology, excuse me, additional technology resources and assistive technology tools for students to help with accessibility features within our website and within the Chromebooks. And then lastly, um, it's critical that we provide support to our teachers. So we have a resource for staff section. This is EdTech support here, so that teachers can get support, uh, from our support staff in terms of technology, professional development opportunity tools that exist and will continue to exist for remote learning, blended learning, and then, um, EdTech support documents in there for Google information, clever badges. Any question the teacher would have regarding our technology, we've placed it in here. We also have a support forum for immediate assistance, so if someone needs assistance from a tech integration specialist, one of our staff, they fill out this form, a tech integration specialist is going to reach out to them and support them with their tech needs. And I believe we mentioned this before, maybe in our last school community meeting, but our EdTV staff has also created a page which offers suggestions to staff in terms of video production, as well as, uh, a request form for video production assistance. So, you know, using the tools you have as a, as a, as someone at home, whether it's your phone, your Chromebook, an iPad, creating a video to support your students, how do I do it? What are some tips? Excuse me. And then, um, there's a tab on the bottom, excuse me, to request assistance. So if they, if they're having trouble making a video or want to get one published, our EdTech, our EdTV staff are here and ready to support our teachers. And there's an application process or a form for them to fill out there as well. So that was a really quick, um, relatively quick, I would, I would think, walkthrough of our website. Um, as I mentioned before in my initial message to parents last week, there will be bumps along the way. However, if we remember to communicate what's working and what's not working, we can address those challenges best, uh, by communicating and working together. But I feel really confident, um, really proud of the work that everyone's done regarding this website to get ready for tomorrow. Um, and we just ask if you're having any issues, if you have any concerns, please reach out to us, we're all here. Uh, and at that point, unless there are any other questions, Dr. Sorensen, I'll turn it back to you.
Okay.
Quick question, sorry. Um, I'm getting a message that, um, from home, this is just a, your screen's a blur. So is there going to be, I think you said on, in our last meeting that you were going to, but you explained it really well, and they'll have a chance to go on and explore it live themselves. But is there going to be a tutorial? I thought you had said at one point that, that social media was going to have a tutorial or something?
Yes, so there's a, so I am, um, sending out a communication tomorrow morning, which will go out and will give you all the navigation features for, at, navigating the website, and our EdTV staff is also recording the video, and will be creating a video tutorial for this. And then we've also talked about creating some additional small videos along the way as well.
That's great, thank you.
You're welcome.
So Chris, on the, uh, if a teacher wants to, it looks like we have a biology teacher, I don't know, they're working on the, uh, they're working on, uh, cell, cell structure, and he wants to, he or she wants to actually, uh, do a lesson on cell structure from their home, they can get a video made and, and put it in their resource list?
Yes, they can, yep. And we've given them some tools and suggestions. We've done a lot of professional development, had a lot of secondary staff that have taken advantage, and will continue to do that, Dr. Sorensen. And then we also are providing the support both on the technical side and the video production side from our, uh, tech staff and our, uh, EdTV team.
Wow, that's very good, that's very good. Other, other questions, comments, observations from committee members on, on where we are?
I just wanted to say thank you. I mean, all the work that you went into this is incredible. So for thanking you, all your staff, all the teachers, everybody who had a hand in this, I think it, it's phenomenal. So, and like you said, baby steps to make sure everything works. So thank you for doing it.
Thank you, yes. I get a great team of dedicated people to, to get this done, a lot of hours, I won't, I won't, I won't, uh, deny that. But, you know, we, we thought it was really important to give a, not just a, an experience when, when people log on tomorrow, but a quality experience that's going to be, um, as seamless as possible. And again, you know, there'll be some, there'll also be some questions and bumps along the road, but we're all here to, to answer those questions and to support everyone along the way.
Dr. Mises?
Yes, um, I just received, uh, a couple of questions from a parent, uh, member, and they're, they're very valid questions because it, it's kind of overarching with what other parents may be, uh, trying to figure out, and, and that's students on individual education plans and how they might need supports for some of the work that we are presenting. And, uh, what I will tell our parents that have students that are, are working through, um, their IEPs and some of these assignments and some of the resources may, may need to be, um, you know, supported. Uh, what I would do is, um, we also have email addresses of the MSN's moderate special needs, uh, staff members that are associated with your child. Uh, what I would do is I would email them, and they will follow up with you and be able to have conversations around the different kinds of supports that can be, uh, added and, you know, at home, and, and things that, that they can do at home to support, uh, their, their children during this time. But I think that that's one of the, um, most difficult things that we're having to address in school systems now is how, how do we support our families of, of all needs? So our special needs students, that they actually do need some supports, we will, uh, support them with the staff that we have that are associated with them now. So if, if they have a staff members, uh, and their IEP indicates that they have certain staff members that are working with them, we urge you to reach out with them, and, and they can really help with that. And another question that was asked is, you know, what will happen, you know, as we progress through the year, and there are gaps, um, as we head into next school year? And one of the things that the, the parent asked, which is a very, a very valid question, is, uh, will we be able to, to help with those issues next year? And I, I think that's very relevant, and I think that's, that's our, um, our approach is, anything that we experienced this year and those gaps that will, will, will keep, uh, you know, uh, will, will exist. Uh, we need to, to be aware of that, and, and we will work with parents in schools. But I think the dialogue starts, um, with the MSN so that we can continually look at how these pieces come together. I know, uh, Dr. Campbell is a former special education director, he may have something to add to this, but, um, I'll turn it over to him through you, Dr. Sorensen.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Mises, I do. So, um, as Dr. Mises said, um, we've been working, the first thing that we, we think of is the, uh, the appropriateness and the connectedness of all of our students, right? We really want them, as I said, to be able to engage in the learning, engage with their, their teachers and the specialists, um, while we're doing this remote learning experience. So in terms of our special education teachers, that Dr. Rogers and I have, have met quite a bit. We've, um, we've arranged this, so our moderate special needs teachers that work in these grade level classrooms and work in these departments, in particular courses at the middle school and high school, are engaged with the teachers in the planning of their lessons. So they're supporting those lessons and the lesson template, the work that's going on in the classrooms will be supported by the moderate special needs teachers. Um, as Dr. Mises pointed out, it's really important that as time goes on, that they continue to do that, collaborate with, with the general education teachers, but also make connections and have an, an open dialogue with parents about how things are going. In addition, I pointed out our, um, program-specific tabs. Um, so they're specific, even at the high school, but that's in directory form. It's not in a friendly icon form, it's in, it's in a, in directory form. So all of our project growth programs, our ASD programs at the secondary level, all of our, you know, the care program, there are, there are unique lessons that are being developed by the moderate special needs teachers and our related service providers for those students as well. So we're taking into consideration, um, all of, all of those students, particularly, um, during this time. And in terms of the gaps, um, we've already had, started having conversations about that, not just for our students with, um, individualized education programs, but all of our students, right? So we need to think, um, you know, when we return, how do we support that? And, and prior to our return, how do we support that? So we are, I started, started having conversations with- So we are, I started, started having conversations with a lot of our academic coordinators this afternoon about that. So we have to start thinking and planning for, you know, what we do when we return to school as, as usual to address those issues.
All right. What else? What else from committee members on this agenda item? Okay. All right. Then I'm going to move on now to the policy adoptions. Mr. Morgan?
All right. Bear with me one second. All right. I think the first policy, I have dual screens going, so bear with me. All right. We have policy 5.12, which is voluntary termination of employment. This is a policy where there were no recommended changes.
Okay. Committee members, any, any discussion on this policy? Which is the voluntary termination of employment policy? If I don't see any hands for a question, I will entertain a motion to approve the policy as presented. You're gonna do that? All right, Michelle, un, 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 unmute yourself.
I forgot about the unmuting. I moved that we approve policy 5.12 as presented.
Seconded by, unmute yourself, Kim, please.
I'll second it.
All right. Any questions to this policy? Okay. I guess these are all gonna be roll call votes, Dr. Mises?
Yes, please.
Everybody has to unmute and give me your vote. I'll go as it presents on my, on my screen. Lee?
Yes.
Vedna?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
And Margie?
Yes.
Everybody approved. Thank you very much. The next policy is the Corey policy, Mr. Morgan.
Yes, the next policy is the Corey policy is policy 5.16. There were no recommended changes for this policy. It dates back to 2003. Again, there's no recommended changes to this policy.
All right. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Margie moves it, seconded by?
I'll second it.
The second. Any questions?
I have one. On 2.0, and it's just awkward to me and maybe I'm just, the way I'm reading it, but it, so it's basically the last full line where it says the school department has no Corey data or who, who current Corey data is approaching three years of age. Is, does Corey data age? Is that like terminology in the legislation?
I can add to that. Yeah, we rerun Corey's every three years. And it's a very strict process about where we keep them, shredding of old, all that data. So we do have to rerun them. And we just did one this, a few, I'm blurry on what month it is, but a few months ago, we just did the entire district again. So, yep, it's every three years.
I know, I know it's every three years. It's just the wording of it to me is weird because it's aging. So it was like saying that Corey is three years of age. So to me, that's kind of weird. But it could just be me and how I'm reading it, but I just.
Yeah, it, it's up to you folks. We, I really, when I looked at it with Dr. Campbell, we, it's the protocol we use, so we didn't change anything from when it was originally written, but we can always amend it too.
They, they timeout.
Yeah.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I understand what you said, Michelle. It's just it's oddly written, three years of age. Yeah.
I don't know if we should do like, current Corey data is approaching it the three year window or something or life cycle. I don't know.
I can work on something with Dr. Campbell to just tighten it up a little bit.
So we can do, we can, we can change that and phrase it so that at the conclusion, just that we review them every three years. It's a, it's a.
Yeah.
Three year cycle basis.
I would say just a minor adjustment on that line.
So we could do approaching its three year review or something like that.
Yep, with your permission.
So having, hearing that input from Michelle, do I have a motion?
Yes, I'll move it again with the correct, with the change.
Okay, seconded by?
I'll second it again.
Lee was the second. There you go. Okay. And we'll just take the vote going around. Lee, your vote?
Yes.
Uh, Vedna?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Bob and Margie. Everybody voted in favor.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Morgan, back to you on fingerprinting.
Okay. All right. So fingerprinting policy 5.17. This is quite a lengthy policy. It is actually, no, it's not a new policy, it was enacted in 2014. But there were no changes. So it's a lengthy one, but we did not have any changes.
Yes, it's, it pretty clearly comes right from the statute, pretty much, I think.
Yes, it does.
Okay. Motion, questions? Michelle?
I move that we approve policy 5.17 as presented.
Seconded by?
I'll second it.
Who's the second? Any questions? Okay, again, the vote, Lee?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Margie?
Yes.
And Vedna?
Yes.
Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you. And now we go to domestic violence, Mr. Morgan.
Yes, domestic violence policy 5.18. This is, no, it's not a new policy, it was originally 2015. There is one change. If you see under documentation, there was a change, an employee shall satisfy this documentation requirement by providing anyone is, is just correct, it looks like a more of a grammatical change there. So the policy in spirit is unchanged. Here's a grammatical correction on that page. We showed us on page two.
Right. Excellent. Any questions? Floor is open for motion.
I'll move it.
Margie moves the policy as presented.
A second.
One change. And who was the second?
Michelle.
Michelle, thank you. Questions? Okay, we shall vote. Lee? I can read Lee, I can read her. She said yes. Michelle, yes?
Yes.
Uh, Kim?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Margie?
Yes.
So everybody voted in favor of that one. And so the last policy tonight is no school.
Very fitting. Yes, policy 9.4, no school and delayed opening announcements. There were no changes in this policy as well.
Okay. Hi. Go ahead, Kim.
I'll move that it be approved.
Okay. So I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, Lee's the second. And I have one, one perhaps timely on this policy. And I'll, give me one second here. I'm still on domestic violence. I have to get to this one. It was the last sentence of that first paragraph. It references inclement weather, in case of inclement weather. The parents, it is the parent's responsibility to decide if conditions would be detrimental to the well being of the child and this absence for this reason is excusable. I, I have a little problem with, with, with that. I had, because I think the word inclement weather is probably too vague. And it, it probably now because of what's just happened, we should probably include other occasions or other, other events in that sentence. So I really think it should read in case of severe weather. But inclement could just be rain. And then we're saying it's, you could be excused for that.
Yep, agreed.
It's foggy out.
So I'm thinking that it should say severe weather and any other dangerous conditions such as what we have right now. And then I would suggest that the absence is not excusable. It can, it can be excusable. I don't think it automatically is excusable.
Yes, agreed.
Dr. Mises?
I agree. And, you know, right now, we, we actually operate under those terms. People don't always go to the policy. They, they go, they, you know, when we have a situation, and we've had situations now where we could, we can have one segment of town that the roads just are not clear. And we tell parents often, if, if, if you feel that your road is impassable, you know, let us know. And, and sometimes our buses can't even get down those roads. So we do have those conversations, but it's on a case by case basis based on the condition. So, you know, I think it's relevant.
Okay. So Lee, Michelle rather?
I just had one other thing that I was thinking of where it says, that second paragraph, announcements will be broadcast over radio stations. I know we also do TV, so I didn't know if it would be appropriate to just do radios, radio and television stations?
Yes, we definitely can do that since we, we, we announce over radio, television.
Social, everything.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's the, the channel now that we communicate in. It's, it's everything we can get the message out on.
Yep.
Certainly can add that. Yep.
So I think we can, we can, we can approve this policy with what Michelle's comment and what I'm trying to say in that sentence. Maybe it should read in case of dangerous weather or other serious occasions, it is the parent's responsibility to decide if the conditions would be detrimental. And then that first sentence would be absence for these reasons can be considered excusable. It's not automatic. If everybody agrees with that, then we can vote this. Otherwise, it's gonna go back to policy.
Jim, I have a suggestion. Maybe it would be, maybe considered opposed to.
Whatever. All right, sure. Absence for this reason may be considered an excuse absence.
Yeah. Well, they'd have to bring it up to the principal and they, they have a process for that.
All right. All right. So with those two changes, I think we can vote it. Bob, is that all right?
Yes.
All right. So I'll take a motion.
I'll move it.
Thank you, Margie, seconded by. Lee is the second. And are there any questions to where we are on this? All right. And we'll take the vote going around. Lee?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Vedna?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Margie?
Yes.
Share votes, yes. So that's unanimous. Thank you, Bob. Good work on those policies. It's a lot of work. Are you 50% through all your policies?
You may be.
All right. All right. So now we're doing job descriptions. Who's doing job descriptions?
Yep. We have two job descriptions tonight. The first is the school business administrator. Mr. Costin helped us put this together. We really reframed the whole job description from where it was at before. It hadn't been updated since 1992, so it's changed dramatically. So you really see edits. It's more a rewrite of the job and no one knows it better than Mr. Costin. There is one typo that I did not catch that we forgot to add our sense of humor line, which is in all our jobs. So we will be re-adding that. And of all people, we have a very entertaining and very skilled business administrator. So we need that sense of humor line to survive. But it is really aligned with a lot of different protocols and things that are in place that Gary works with, the procurement process. He's the officer as well as different regulations, especially with DSE reporting. So it's very specific intentionally because of all the different components from the school lunch program to, he's a general liaison really for the director of facilities as well and things like that. So there's so many different layers to his role, circuit breaker, special education, transportation. And he obviously is the point person for all the staff in the business department as well, payroll. So with the exception of the addition of the sense of humor in, added into the qualifications, which was my error, we will, that's really where it's at.
Okay, committee members. Michelle?
I would just like to add that same line that we added to the superintendent's job description where you, I think it was written in outside of the box thinker in regards to creative fiscal management and cost saving strategies. I think that obviously is perfect for this job description.
Definitely. Yeah, I know what that is.
So we have two additions at this point. Anything else on this job description? Okay, then with those two additions, let's take a motion.
I'll move it, that we approve the job description with the two amendments.
Thank you, seconded by?
We can second it.
Kim is the second. Any, any questions to the motion? Okay, we'll go around. Lee? Michelle?
Yes.
Vedna?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Margie?
Yes.
Share votes, yes.
Okay.
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 Assistant facilities direction.
Yep. This is a position that we've had in place for a long time and we've had to do a lot of different updates in place. Really with the school dude work order system, similar to a lot of our maintenance job descriptions. We're looking for a bachelor's degree of some sport in facilities management, the ability to communicate and train and supervise union custodial maintenance and our skilled personnel. Excuse me, individual really works closely with the skilled craftsmen. And really someone with a district this large that is a point person for it. If you look under performance responsibilities, you'll see this person would assist, say, Mr. Montron in preparing and prioritizing capital outlay, the budget, capital repair projects, really being a liaison for all of that. We also added in some of the physical requirements that we've added to our custodial and maintenance workers as well. So there's some consistency there. So in this essentially is the position that Frank Silva holds right now, but we, it again, hasn't been updated in a very, very long time. So we wanted to make some necessary edits.
Very comprehensive job description. Okay. Committee members? Not seeing any hands. Boy, this is easy.
I'll move it.
Margie moves it as presented, seconded by?
I'll second it.
Mr. Morgan is the second. Any, any questions to it? All right. We'll vote on this one. Lee?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Vedna?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Margie?
Yes.
All right, that's unanimous. Good work, everybody. Okay, the next item is the superintendent's search process. We put this on the agenda because we have, as a committee, we have a difficult decision to make with this. So let me turn this over to.
Yep. So as you all know, we had the interview scheduled for the week of March 23rd. Those were obviously postponed until further notice. Ms. Grimes was able to connect with all those individuals and let them know. We, it's a complex situation, obviously, right now. We have had two candidates except other positions that they were in the pipeline for, out of that pool of eight people. So that's something to keep in mind. And I think we would need to review what you folks would like as the next steps in this process. There's all types of options out there, but it's really at your discretion. We do have two of the candidates that are still in place are out of state. So it is critical to know that that is a factor in this with the, the situation of the country right now. So that is where we're at. We've been on pause. Really, everything is in place. We're ready to go with questions and we were ready to go, honestly, with everything up to the meals. We're ready for those interview evenings. But it's kind of tricky at this point. All of the interview committee members in the community and all, they've all, they all know we're on pause as well, the, the members of the interview team, so to speak. So I wanted to talk to you folks and let me know if you'd like us to schedule a separate meeting to discuss this further and things of that nature, but that's really where we're at right now.
And I am concerned that the, the two candidates who dropped, who got other jobs were in our top seven, correct?
Correct. Yep.
The longer we wait, we run the risk of some of these good, these good candidates finding other jobs. So. Michelle?
Could we do some sort of Zoom interviewing and just to keep people in the pipeline, you know, so that they don't think that we've forgotten about them?
Right.
Or you can just do it.
Well, if we could do initial round, initial round of interviews to get to our top three. And then.
Yep, it would be, I think the interview team, I have to look at my notes, is about 14 or 15 people. So it would be a large group of people interviewing and we'd need to have a preliminary Zoom meeting to really get on the same page. We were gonna do that before the evening, the orientation process. And I just don't know people's availability and things of that nature, but I could start researching that of the team that we put together.
Well, that, you know, this, this stay in place might actually work in our favor to have a meeting, Zoom meeting with the committee before we, you know, just to get some of the housekeeping out of the way.
Yep. Yep. Yep.
How does the committee feel about going ahead with uh doing some interviewing uh for the committee on the top seven candidates without seeing them in person?
Well, if we, would we zoom, we'd zoom with them, right?
Right.
So we would get to see the person, kind of.
All right.
And I think it's important.
I mean, you can see, you can tell a lot by what you see and what body language and what they have to say. I mean, you still have all the this would be the same as if there were, you were sitting there because all those components are are there.
Okay. Other thoughts? Because if everybody agrees, we're going to go ahead and try to set up, uh, get this, the ball rolling here.
Yeah, because otherwise you're, all those candidates are going to be taking positions. They need someone's in demand, so. Unless we can convince Gary to hang around another year.
Hey, Bob, it's funny you should mention that because I asked him that question.
I'm sure you did.
I blamed it on the virus, you know?
It's a virus, all right. Of course, after all this, Gary, I'm sure you're kind of burnt out, so I don't blame you.
All right. So Patty, you want to talk, see if you can get something?
Yes, and I'll get an update to all of you. I'll work with Ms. Grimes and we'll um see what we can get together and things of that nature. So, yep.
Okay, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Anything else on that? Any questions from committee members on superintendent search at this point? Okay, and we'll, we'll move along. Uh, old business, anybody have anything to come up on the old business? Okay, anything want to bring up, anything for new business? Don't you dare. Michelle, go ahead.
I think that's probably going to come up in the superintendent's report, and I know that a lot of us were sent a message or an email or Facebook message this weekend, but about just keeping an eye on what's happening with MCAS and the whole situation, I think is really important for us to keep on our forefront.
I think, I think
I forwarded that message to Gary, Jim, and Chris, so they're, they're up on it.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's a developing problem. Gary, you want to address that in any way?
Yeah, you know, um, the problem that we have right now with MCAS is the uh, the US Department of Education has left it up to the states to have some kind of legislative action as to how they're going to handle state assessment. And the governor has actually sent um, the House of Representatives and then the Senate, um, the authority to set direction on what's going to happen with MCAS. The problem that we have is that um, there's some level of interpretation on that. And um, you know, what, what the general consensus is by educators, by the MTA, uh, by most administrators in the Commonwealth is it, let's just have a waiver this year for MCAS. Let's move forward off of it. What we need to do is for seniors of, you know, we will find a way um to graduate them, uh, not hold them, uh, you know, accountable for MCAS at this point. Um, that, that is the general consensus um across the Commonwealth. Uh, and for, for our freshmen that would, would take the biology exam, they would take it sophomore year. We'd come up with a, a model of how they would move forward. Um, the problem that the, the legislation has right now is that it would uh leave it up to every municipality to come up with a model of how they'll deal with it. And I really think that this should come directly from the Department of Education, not necessarily from um the legislative body. I think what we need to do is lobby to give the uh commissioner the authority to waive and to postpone uh MCAS for different segments of the population moving forward. Um, so I think, um, I know Dr. Campbell wrote extensively, extensive response to uh Ms. Hunt over the weekend. This is something that we've been talking about behind the scenes for quite a while. It needs to be resolved. Uh, it's one of the things that we need to move off of because uh it's just looming over everyone's head. So uh, Dr. Campbell, if you want to jump in?
Yeah, just to reiterate what Dr. Myas has said, you know, um, I asked the commissioner about a week ago specifically what his intentions were regarding the waiver. We knew that the federal waiver existed and that he applied for that and it was received and it was going on to to our state legislators to, to determine the next steps. You know, there was the, the option to waive, to modify, or to postpone. And a waiver is is critical, I think, at this point. But there's a lot of questions regarding what, what that means. What are you waiving? Are you waiving the testing for that period of time? Um, or are you waiving it for the year with the students um that cohort having to stay, take it the following year? So that's a, that's a very, that's a very important question. For example, our, as Dr. Myas has mentioned, our biology, um, our science MCAS at the high school level is year end exam. And our students take biology, as do most um across the Commonwealth for that competency determination piece in science. Our students take it in ninth grade. Quincy Public Schools, I know, they take it in 10th grade. So it's, it varies. It would be extremely difficult, if not impossible, for us to test both current ninth graders and next year's ninth graders um in one sitting. And it also poses a problem for us in terms of um students that are now in chemistry or physics, taking an end of year exam at the end of the year for content that they no longer have. So there's a lot of factors, excuse me, that really need to be considered with what, what, how you define waiver. And then the other piece, we have students that perhaps haven't passed the competency determination. They have multiple attempts, as you all know, as high school students. Um, but there are certain seniors perhaps um that may not have met those competency determinations. And then the, the options um go away. So those are really important things, too. And as Dr. Myas has said, I think that the, the commissioner, we really need, you know, the, the guidance from, you know, the state to make a determination uh that's, you know, that waives it, I think, for, for our students and it's not going to interfere with um, you know, the factors that I just laid out there.
So in, in addition to all of that, from a mental health perspective, uh, you know, we've disrupted it, not we, the virus has disrupted every student's routine. Anxiety is up all across the board. Bringing them back to school and doing MCAS would almost feel like persecution to me to, for many of these students. So I, I, I think makes a lot of sense to me to, to, to find waivers here.
Yeah, can I add a, a quick, um, thank you, Dr. Campbell. I, I didn't forward your response because it was an open meeting law thing and I just just wanted to seek your, your answer. And I'm, I knew you were going to mention it tonight. Um, I also reached out to MASC and they pretty much said the same thing, that they're pretty sure that the commissioner is going to do it. I think that what they said is he's got to get, get through all the sticky parts first to try and figure out what's going to happen. Um, the other thing I think that you mentioned, Dr. Campbell, and, and I think this is one of the reasons it was brought up to us is, you know, we don't have a state, and you had mentioned this too, we don't have a state senator right now. It's going before the Senate. Also, so we need to urge our legislators, uh, the, one of the questions was whether or not our legislators are, are um voting the way, you, you know, in our interest. So I think it's up to all of us to just, we don't have a state senator, so we need to make sure that we all and the public out there contacts our legislator, urges them to contact their fellow senators. Um, and that we just make it known what we believe is in the best interest of our kids. So that way our legislators do vote in our, in our behalf.
Yes, and I think that
It's really important to get involved right now um in this.
Well, I think a, a year end exam, for example, kind of stressing again that, that biology students, a year end exam. And look at the way our year is ending right now. So to, to replicate that as a 10th grader who didn't, hadn't had that content for over a year's time and it was disrupted the way um would, would be a, a challenge, to say the least.
It will impact them negatively.
Yeah. We just need to let them know, but we also need to encourage them that if they're going to go before a vote, they should check with us and they should find out how the people in the trenches, I don't know if they did or not, but they should find out how the people in the trenches feel about this before they go in to make a vote, to do, to vote on something like that. So that's like all of our responsibility right now.
Thank you. Okay, uh, Patty? Uh, I just remembered something I wanted to mention to you uh about the uh facilities director position. We we made reference in that uh up to the capital outlay committee. Do they still call it the capital outlet or is it the CIC Capital Improvement Committee?
I, I think it's capital improvement now.
Is it? Okay, we tend to call it capital outlay. Um, I will confirm with Mr. Montrant. Um, he proved this too, so I can confirm and make sure it's aligned with the town.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, so superintendent's report.
Yes, I have, uh, I'll try to keep it short. Um, ju- ju- just um some, some things to, to, to note. Uh, we uh you, we, we don't have our students uh in attendance tonight, but I, I do want to uh cite some things that are happening, even though we don't have have school uh as the, in the traditional sense where we, we hear a lot from our kids. So uh, I just want to highlight a, a number of things that, that's happening, uh, that are happening around the, the district. Just want to highlight, and some of you may have heard this, but uh Brendan Giuliani and Connor Morgan from North One, the uh Mass STEM Hub Online Industry Challenge for Plodgy Lead the Way. Um, and they came up with a idea of a sweet life. It's an app that's specially designed for children to help educate and make learning to live with type one diabetes manageable. So they, they did very well in that. Um, also, I've, I've had the opportunity uh to be interviewed by Plymouth South High School senior Matt Dougherty and Plymouth Panther TV News. He, he's, it's like clockwork. He sends me an email, email, can I interview you about the COVID-19 and what's happening behind the scenes? So for the last two weeks in a row, he's, he's um emailed me and we've done Skype interviews, but he, he's done a nice job with that. Um, another uh award winner over at North, Nolan Liskoff, won second place and it's $750. And it's E, E for All's All Idea Pitch Contest. And uh he virtually pitched his Nola's, uh, Nolan's Banana Bread, which is making its way around the community. It's just a very popular banana bread. Uh, and he has a business model and he's been um really pitching it around town, making money. But he, he actually got second, he won second place, 100, 750 dollars. And this was actually judged by a panel of judges and received feed, feedback by industry um representatives and so on. And Plymouth North News won best high school, yet uh high school magazine program by the National Academy of Television Arts and Science. Um, and this is the Boston-New England chapter, along with best on camera talent and two honorable mentions. And our other across town uh news team Panther TV won first place student production award for high school newscast from the National Academy of Television Arts and Science, the Boston-New England chapter as well. And I want to uh also recognize our uh food service program. They, they have been doing, uh, this is going on, uh, our, our fourth week of providing food. Uh, Pat, Pat Bancott, we have a parent volunteer, Lisa Adams. We have about 70 volunteers. Uh, and we've, you know, received monetary donations from EAPC, Cobra, and the Plymouth Education Foundation. Uh, we've been serving daily 400 breakfasts, 400 lunches every day, Monday through Friday. And on um this Thursday, we're, we will probably give out 400 bags of groceries. Um, and that's in partnership with the um South Shore Community Action Council. So, you know, it's just, um, it, it's just wonderful to have uh this happening. Uh, PCIS has become our distribution hub. Uh, and I tell you that um the food service program has just been, just been outstanding. And these monetary donations, we're just filling the, filling the voids uh where we need to for, for food. Um, but keep in mind, this Friday is a, a scheduled holiday for the district. So we, we moved our food distribution to Thursday. So Thursday will be food distribution and um it's really ramped up. And we got um a donation from Cisco uh in Kingston, Cisco Foods. They, they donated 3,000 bags uh so that we could actually put food in. So um it's, it's been a, you know, it's just make a phone call and I said, sure, what can I do? And it, it's, it's a remarkable community effort. So Dr. Storm, back to you.
You muted Dr. Storson.
Thank you. Any questions for uh Dr. Myas' son's report? Uh, committee members, uh, sort of related to that, we're sort of getting into the season when we have to do this superintendent evaluation. And uh it's going to be coming up uh as an agenda item because uh it's different this year because I'm, you know, we're out in school. It may be very difficult for Dr. Myas to finish the goals that he set for himself. Maybe he did, maybe he won't, but we have to be be prepared for that. So let me suggest, I don't know if you had a chance to read, NISC put out a COVID-19 update um specifically regarding student, a student, uh specifically regarding superintendent evaluations during the COVID year. So if you have a chance to read it, just a couple of pages, has some good ideas in it. Uh, and we're going to have to be discussing this probably in the next, in the next month or so, you know, we elections have been put off, right? What is the election date in town upon us now?
It's tomorrow. They vote tomorrow, I think. I think it's June 20th.
June, oh, oh, they're going to, oh, they haven't done that yet officially?
Not officially.
All right, well, anyways, we have a little bit more time, but it's still something we have to address.
And, and to that point, Dr. Storson, you know, um, a couple of the goals that I had this year were, you know, strategic planning and, and also um our diversity committee. I mean, tho- those committees are up and running. And we're having to meet virtually now, but I mean, our whole timeline has, has changed.
Right.
The diversity committee is, is a, is a perpetual committee that will meet forever, but the, the strategic planning committee is, you know, we, we kind of amended our, our goal to try to get done by the end of July because of, of, of where we were, you know?
Okay, so I'm just asking the committee to look at that MASC document because it's going to guide us a little bit as we go forward and that'll be something we'll be discussing in the not too distant future. Uh, that's all I have. We're now it's time for retirements. Oh, no, that is, no, I want to retire, but
You and me both.
Gary and I took that, those spots.
Um, this was a carryover from one of our other meetings that we had shortened, but uh we have two retirements to announce. Um, one is Nancy Dawson, who is our virtual school um site coordinator after 18 years of service. Um, and she's a shared at both high schools, very close to my heart. She'll be retiring June 30th, 2020. She's a special lady. And Linda Shay um is a grade two classroom teacher after 32 years of service from South Elementary School, and her retirement is also June 30th, 2020.
That's great.
Ms. Hunt? Unbe, un, un, unmute yourself. If somebody tells her to un-
I hear, I was on the, I was on the other screen, sorry. Um, on behalf of the Plymouth School Committee, I wish to thank these individuals for combined 50 years of service to the Plymouth Public Schools and wish them a safe and happy retirement.
Thank you so much. Reports and proposals from committee members. Michelle?
I just wanted to give everybody a little update on the um, the PAC. We had our first virtual meeting last Thursday. And um basically they're working to get all the computers and everything that all the students need within the collaborative to where they need to be. A lot of the teachers and um directors and are going out and bringing computers to homes and everything like that. So they, they have most of the students um set up. They even have some um hotlines for the Paces kids so that they um, because they need a little bit more support. And so they've set up some hotlines. Um, and they're also trying to uh help families dealing with anxiety because, you know, obviously their students might be feeling a level of anxiety, but then their parents also another level. So they're monitoring the families and making sure that, you know, everybody is okay and um dealing with this new normal that we all have. Right now, they're at a um pretty steady enrollment. So they, we lost two and two new students came this year. So um, all in all, the collaborative is doing really well and getting, working with Google Classroom for the first time. So um, but the budget's in good place and our kids are all being taken care of and set up really well. So that's it.
Thank you. Anything else under uh proposals, proposals from committee members? Okay, PYDC is their report? Probably didn't meet.
The, um, yeah, no, they didn't meet. Uh, and um, but I was unable to attend, but everybody got a copy of the minutes, I think.
Yes.
Yeah, everybody got the minutes. So I think we're all set with that.
Okay.
And um, I don't see building committee on here either. The building committee isn't meeting, but the marine facility um, uh, construction meeting that I attend does meet because this is constructing. And um they do have some issues with some shingles and things, but And they do have some issues with some shingles and things, but them, that they're moving forward on. So I have gone to two and I haven't gone to two of the meetings because of lately, it's been a little bit, well, we have to keep the committee down to 10, yeah. They were more than 10.
Okay, any questions for Margie on PYDC and/or building committee? Okay, thank you, Margie. Accounts payable and grants. Accounts payable first. Kim?
No personnel reports.
Did I pass it?
Yes.
Yeah, there, there is a quick...
Personnel, go ahead.
Yep. This again is from a prior meeting that we had six coach-adviser appointments, one classified appointment, two maternity leaves, one alternative leave request for a year, for next year, a second year leave of absence. We're in the staffing season of people going in and out with leaves, and then four resignations.
Okay, you've heard that report. Anybody have any questions?
No.
Okay, okay, moving along now to accounts payable. Ms. Hunt?
Okay, I'm just waiting for my screen to change. There we go. Where school committee members have been provided with a copy of the Cost Center Transfer and Transaction Summary Report and the warrant for review, I move that the Plymouth School Committee accept and approve the report and accounts payable warrant, number S040220, dated April 2nd, 2020, in the amount of $1,367,763.20, as presented.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any questions on the warrant? Okay, then we will take everybody's vote. Lee?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Vedna?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
And Margie?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, that's unanimous. And now we have grants and revolving funds. Ms. Hunt?
Okay. I move that the Plymouth School Committee accept and approve the Grants and Revolving Funds warrant, number G040220, dated April 2nd, 2020, in the amount of $597,032.07, as presented.
Is there a second? Michelle is the second on that one. Are there any questions to that?
Dr. Storson, if I can for one second?
Go ahead.
I just wanted to give some, some appreciation to my staff, the accounts payable staff. Since the shutdown, we have processed almost 1.9 million dollars in bills remotely. Payroll, 3.8 million. Our staff is up and running totally from, from outside the office. So I, I appreciate what they're doing, but I just think it's a credit to Plymouth that we're able to put this in place.
And a credit to your office. Well, absolutely, well done.
We, our vendors are being paid, as is our staff.
Okay, any questions on this motion? Okay, we'll take the vote. Lee, your vote?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Vedna?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Margie?
Yes.
And myself. We're all voting in favor. Thank you on those two. And now we have the minutes of February 3rd. What's the pleasure of the committee? Michelle?
I move that we approve the minutes of February 3rd as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Bob is the second on that one. Any questions on the minutes of February the 3rd? I don't see any hands, so we'll go ahead and take that vote. Lee? Michelle?
Yes.
Vedna?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Abstain.
Bob?
Yes.
And Margie?
Abstain.
All right, so we have two abstentions. The rest in favor, motion passes. Thank you. And now we have the minutes of February the 24th. What's the pleasure? Michelle?
I just have one change on page nine, and I may have said it wrong, so maybe it's not a change, but the date should be May 14th and not April 14th.
Well, you said it before I got to it. Say it again? Say it again, what else to change?
Page nine, and I'm talking about the senior showcase, and it, it should be May 14th, not April 4th.
I got it, I got it.
We got that fixed. Okay, now with that fixed, do I have a motion? Michelle, please.
That we approve the minutes with the, the change.
Thank you. Seconded by? Mr. Morgan is the second, thank you. Any question, any more questions on that, on those? Okay, the vote going around. Lee?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Vedna?
I abstain, I'm abstaining.
Abstain. Kim?
Abstain.
Bob?
Yes.
Margie?
Yes.
Okay, so we have two abstentions. Everybody else in favor, that motion passes. Okay, now, Ms. Grimes, have you received during this meeting any communication from committee member, from community members who want to speak to the committee?
Dr. Storson, I received one, which I had already forwarded to Dr. Miasis and he addressed it.
Earlier, okay. So we have nothing else on this particular agenda item. Is there anything else to come before the committee this evening? I don't see any hands, so I'm going to declare this meeting adjourned and thank everybody for being here. Stay safe, stay healthy.
Thank you, guys.
Bye, everybody. Bye.
Bye, guys.
Good luck at work, Vedna. Good luck at work, Vedna.